Board, are we ready? All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Oh, do we have our recording going?
I don't have it.
Yes.
I don't know where it is.
We're going, okay, thank you. All right, welcome everybody. Today is Tuesday, May 13th, the time is 4:01 PM. We are convened as the Provo City School Board of Education, and we are meeting at Shoreline Middle School today, which is located at 1201 West, 890 South in Provo, Utah. We are going to begin with a roll call. I'll begin and we'll go down my table, and then we'll go down Gina's table. So, I'm Jennifer Partridge, Board President.
Wendy Dow, Superintendent.
Meg Van Wagenen, Board Member.
Emily Harrison, Board Member.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Gina Hales, Board Vice President.
Terry McCabe, Board Member.
Devin Daly, Business Administrator.
Monica Toulon, Student Board Member.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a...oh, and before we do that, I first want to welcome everyone else who's here with us today, and especially thank our tech department, our communications, and our wonderful assistant Bonnie. It's always a lot of work to get these meetings put together, but being outside of our usual location, it's even more work. So, we appreciate all that they did for that. So, do we have a motion to start our study session?
I move we begin our study session.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Van Wagenen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Hales. Okay, we are now in study session, and we want to also recognize that Board Member Lisa Boyce is coming right now. Welcome Lisa, thank you for hurrying on over here. So, okay, so we are going to begin with our Board Member Training by Emily Harrison. That's okay.
It's okay. We've got nowhere to be but here for the next few hours.
Very captive, Bonnie. Shall we, do you want us to move on? Do you want to just summarize it?
Yes. No, if we can...
Okay. Okay, we will come back to that item, but let's go ahead and move on to the next item, number six, which is our Land Trust Plan Approvals. And we will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Jared Seitz.
So, by way of reminder, there's a procedure that we have in place as our schools are generating their school improvement plan. In an effort to consolidate that process, we rolled the trust lands plan into the school improvement plans. And as each of you had a chance recently to read those drafts, I also shared with you a rubric that would allow you to identify the trust lands activities that are in the school improvement plan. Now, the deadline for principals to enter that into the trust lands portal was this past Friday. And so, those two deadlines did not align. And so, as a matter of convenience and to demonstrate in the record that you've had a chance to review those trust lands plans, they've been uploaded into Board Docs for you to have a chance to look at. Just as a reminder clarifier, those were already included in the school improvement plans. However, there is a separate portal with the state. Yesterday, as we uploaded those, they had all been completed with the exception of two schools who have since completed those. But once again, I remind you that their goals, activities, and expenditures were included in the school improvement plans. So, we've attached those in there for your reference, and I'd like to be able to answer any questions you have, because one of the things you will be doing tonight is reviewing the opportunity to approve those trust land plans and the school improvement plans into that one. But remember, we tried to create a one consolidated document. Any questions about that?
So, just to clarify, the two schools that are on here, we're still approving them even though they're not on?
Correct, because those activities, expenditures, goals were included in the school improvement plan. I can share those with you even as we're meeting today, but those, once we loaded those in, those were not completed at that time. There were two schools.
But they will be completed in time for the deadline for trust plans?
They are completed. We just haven't uploaded them into Board Docs.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
All right, we've all had the chance to review them and look over them, and I know we've asked some questions in that process already. Does anyone have any other questions today about them? Sorry to interrupt you.
And just as a reminder, one of those formalities and requirements that you as a Board of Education have are to review those, and that's where that rubric came that I shared with you previously. Unfortunately, the deadlines for those two projects don't always align. And so, if there's still any questions, I'm happy to assist with that. But you've had a chance to review them, and then we'll recommend that you approve those tonight in the business meeting. Gina?
All right, oh, Lisa, Lisa's reasoning right here, sorry. And then we'll do Gina, sorry.
My question was just in the past, I have signed them physically. Is that still the case, or do we sign them electronically now?
You don't need to sign them physically. In the board minutes, the approval is all that is required.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Lisa.
My question is just, did we vote to...I'm sure I should remember.
Use your mic, please.
Did we vote on school improvement plans at our last meeting? I didn't think we did.
No, that would be this evening.
Okay, but then that will just retroactively cover those because we've seen them, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and now you've seen the actual trust lands portal report that's in Board Docs tonight as well.
All right, thank you Jared, appreciate it. Okay, we will now go back to the previous item, number five, our Board Member Training.
Okay, now I'm ready, sorry. So, this, the principal is talking about dignity, and I, there were 12 dignity principals to follow. And one of the most important, I feel like, is that number four, treating people with dignity means seeing ourselves in them. Treating people with contempt means seeing ourselves above them. So, when we are dealing with each other and with people in the community, or anyone through the schools, or anyone in our life really, if we are seeing ourselves above or even below other people rather than with them, then we are not showing dignity to ourselves or others. So, I thought this was really helpful as we deal with people that maybe we have a disagreement with, or we don't see things the same way, that being curious and always relying back on that everyone in our lives deserves dignity as well as ourselves. So, thank you.
Awesome, okay. Anybody have any follow-up or questions for Emily? Okay, thanks Emily. Okay, for item number seven, we are going to now discuss hazardous and courtesy bus routes. And back to Jared. And if you can just put that mic nice and close, Jared, please.
Okay, I'm hopeful that I'm gonna begin to share some information that might answer some of the questions that have been previously submitted. I'm gonna ask Devin Daly to assist me today because Troy Lindloff, our Director of Transportation, was not able to join us today. But just as a reminder, recent board procedure, and Policy 6600, that procedure directed a review of our existing routes and stops with an approved rubric to evaluate the hazards and determine the ongoing need for these unfunded routes and stops. Our principals worked with their school community councils at the elementary and middle school levels to complete their annual review of school-specific safe routes and to identify needs from the city for walking or biking routes. For instance, as you drove in, you saw there's new sidewalks that are going to make it easier for people to get to Sunset View Elementary. And over here, those are a direct result of the advocacy of those school community councils here at Sunset View, or excuse me, at Shoreline and Sunset View. Annually, these reviews are completed in November, and that's a fall activity for school community councils. Over the past year, Vern Kiesler from Provo City Engineering, or a member of his staff, have attended just about every school community council to discuss specific issues, to walk through specific requests, and then to be able to even share limitations that the city faces. The Franklin School Community Council also submitted a request in a school community council meeting to petition the district to consider approving a continuation of a temporary bus service that we provided last November during construction at 500 West and 300 South. A District Traffic Safety Committee met on March 19th to review these hazardous routes and bus stops as directed by the Board of Education. The committee felt that all of the routes at Amelia Earhart, Canyon Crest, Shoreline, and Spring Creek should continue to be funded according to the rubric. The committee concluded that the safety factors of the two WASATC courtesy routes were not as hazardous as the other routes. At the time, the committee did not recommend these routes continue. The committee did recommend that one of the request routes to pick up students living east of 500 West for Franklin be approved based upon upcoming construction as described and recommended by Provo City Engineering. The committee did not recommend the requested stop at 600 South and 700 West be approved. Though there are a large number of students who cross at that location, only seven students reside in the Franklin boundary. Others are attending the school on choice. We traveled that route together with the Board of Education in a bus to identify these locations. On April 11th, the WASATC community submitted a request to consider consolidating the bus routes from two to one to meet the needs of some students in the area who are traveling through areas that they have identified as hazardous. Yet, these students reside under the one and a half mile from the school. A detailed proposal has been shared with members of the board and your Board Docs, but was not reviewed by the Traffic Safety Committee. The committee will meet annually to review these requests and was not convened a second time, though the board may consider their request and our recommendation tonight. Our Transportation Director Troy Lindloff is concerned about the efficiency of bus routes and the number of working hours for bus drivers. It would be beneficial for at least one route from WASATC to remain in place to meet that need. It is our recommendation that the board continue to approve these existing routes and the newly proposed adjustment to WASATC until an upcoming discussion related to all school boundaries can take place. Potential changes and approvals will then again be considered by the Traffic Safety Committee and the Board of Education. In your Board Docs, you have the document that was reviewed by the Traffic Safety Committee with the specific stops and the recommendations. There are also a few additional items of information, though color-coded, there's really not a color code to it. I apologize. That was just the style of our secretary who took those notes for us. In addition, you see the recommendation for the requests from the WASATC community, and you also have some data and recommendations from Troy on usage, the number of riders each day in those locations. And so, once again, after everything is said and done, we're recommending that as the board studies this, that they continue to approve all of those routes and one route to WASATC Elementary. That second bus that was serving WASATC would then serve the newly recommended routes in the Franklin neighborhood. Troy feels this would be efficient, though it is an additional cost. Perhaps Devin can speak to the total amount of money that we're spending on these unfunded routes and bus stops. But that's what we're recommending that the board consider tonight. So, once again, to continue to fund the routes to Amelia Earhart, Canyon Crest, Shoreline, Spring Creek, and one route, this counter-proposed route at WASATC, in addition to picking up the route requested at Franklin Elementary School. However, we're not recommending that there is a bus stop at 600 South, 700 West at that train intersection. The number of students is only seven, though about 50 students travel there. Over 40 of them are on school choice. Troy's cautious about opening up the precedent of providing busing for students on school choice. Any questions from members of the board about this?
Thank you for that thorough explanation, Jared. What questions do we have? Meg, looks like you're going through your mic.
Well, first, thank you for all your guys' work on this. I know it's a lot, new procedure, having a request, like allowing schools and community councils as part of their safe routes to say, hey, this is a hazardous area. Can we make a proposal? As I was like looking through the, our procedure, and this is something I could have caught as well, I'm wondering if we should update it as a board, like to make sure there is a clear deadline of when a school community council should submit a proposal. Because I don't think, we don't, looking at it, we don't. It just says we'll review it in April, right? Yeah, anyway, so that was just my input as a board. I think we could add that.
As a reminder, this is our first time through it.
Exactly, I know, exactly, that's, yeah. To give us all grace.
Okay, other comments, questions, Gina?
I was trying to find the policy on the website, and I, Procedure 3 is, I think, drug testing. It's supposed to be something about traffic safety, and it was drug testing drivers. So, do we need to update that on the website?
Policy 6600, Procedure 4, actually is about this. There was also another location where these duties and responsibilities of school community council were spelled out. Some of the work of the, of the policy committee was to clean that up a little bit. Right now, the area that is missing from the website is related to the rubric specifically, where we could also add that date. And that's something that we could take that direction and continue to work on and improve that, and make it 6600, Procedure 5 potentially, whatever the committee decides.
I just think it would be, like, I could not find it. So, but I am also challenged. I'm a challenged individual, so maybe it's just me. And the other thing was, and these are just, I know that you've told me this before, so I apologize for asking again. Who are the, not the names, but like, who generally serves on the Traffic Safety Committee?
Well, we definitely don't have years of experience. Our first year, we met, we invited members of Provo City. We invited members of, two, members of our Transportation Department, two principals or administrators from the school district, and we reached out to two parents, though only one was able to join us.
Well, that sounds fantastic, thank you. And they meet once per year, is that what I heard?
That's our current procedure.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa?
I just, circling back about the, like, I remember that when we just recently updated this procedure and policy, I just wonder about, in terms of communicating that well, sorry, out to our community councils. I can see that it would be frustrating if you weren't aware of a deadline, and you worked to put together a proposal, and then it was too late. So, I guess, it feels like maybe you're saying that the people who would have been in that traffic safety meeting have looked at this proposal though, and still given us input in this decision, is that right?
I think it's important to remember that the school community council is tasked with identifying a safe route to school. They identify hazards so they can promote safe ridership on bicycles and walking. Typically, we've not asked school community councils to submit a request for a hazardous route. This is, and so, there was no deadline that was given. It just came up from the Franklin group. And then the requests from WASATC came after they had met. And I believe at some point, they'd learned that there wasn't a recommendation that those two routes would continue. And so, the principal worked with her community council to come up with a proposed alternative.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
Can I just add to that for you, Lisa? I mean, the WASATC community council, they've been talking about the busing over a year, knowing that the routes were gonna be going away with the new location, but also concerned that some of the areas that we're still concerning to them are not necessarily mitigated by the new location. So, I think that conversation, they also, you know, I think that was leading up to kind of this development of having a policy or procedure in place, right?
I think it's important to remember, Franklin wasn't requesting a new, I guess in essence, it was new. They just wanted us to continue to provide a temporary service. They found it appealing for the children to cross there. And when the city made that recommendation too, because the large construction project coming up on University Avenue, they believe will divert a lot more traffic towards 500 West and Freedom Boulevard.
Go ahead, Melanie.
This is for Devin. What, how much are we looking at spending extra?
So, each of the routes for WASATC are right around $16,000. If we consolidate that, the cost will go up just a little bit. And then the Franklin cost is right around $13,000. So, it'll be pretty much a wash.
But the overall cost Troy had estimated was in the $130,000 range.
For just the routes, all the courtesy stops as well, everything altogether that doesn't count is about $270,000. But the, just the routes that we're proposing are $130,000.
But can I clarify? My understanding though is, we had these two routes for WASATC, right? They're asking to consolidate to one, and that second, what we have been doing around already, we'll just go to Franklin if we approve that. So, that's why, I mean, the numbers might fluctuate a little bit, but generally, it is, we're the same as before.
It'll be pretty much the same.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Gina, yes.
So, you mentioned this, and I just wanted to clarify for my own sake. We're approving the, like, we're gonna possibly be looking at boundaries with the boundary and feasibility studies, so these two routes that we've just, one extended and then one consolidated for WASATC and for Franklin. Is this like a one-year approval? Help me understand that.
I think that's still yet to be determined. Our procedure says that we'll review them annually, and I think that's our default. And the timing of that boundary discussion, I don't know if that will align with it. But according to the procedure that we wrote in 6600, we'll review this annually.
So, schools should be prepared that this is only for one year. I'm just worried that people, schools are gonna think that this is perpetually funded. So, just as long as they're aware that every year, it's, because if we do change boundaries, the busing's gonna change. Would that be correct? So, everything's gonna kind of be topsy-turvy. So, as long as they understand that this really is, like, we're serious about, this is annual. We have to redo this every year.
So, if approved tonight, I'll make sure that that communication is clear.
And we're voting not just on the possibility of these two new hazardous routes, but also to keep the ones that are recommended to keep, right? Each one, every year technically, could be changed, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. Terry?
I know that the Franklin Community Council was only expecting this to be for two years because the University of Avenue Bridge construction is going to be for two years. So, the, I know for sure this will come up again next year, but probably not the year after because of construction.
I think the way we've written our procedure is we'll approve these annually. I don't know that we should recommend that we approve these annually and another one for two years. That's my recommendation.
Go ahead, Meg.
Can I just also add a clarification, I think, from our all-day meeting, which I recall, I think before receiving the Franklin request, Troy's department did recommend on the original review to keep the two WASATC routes in, because it helped give enough, his drivers enough routes. That was the initial that we talked about in the all-day meeting. And then we talked about the Franklin. So, I just, I think that's part of what, part of kind of the wash, where it's a part where, it sounds to me that we're taking one of the routes from, using a bus for Franklin, keeping one at WASATC. And there's also a piece of that that allows our Transportation Department to have enough, or enough routes for the drivers. Is that correct?
Yeah, Troy shared some concerns about efficiency on that day. He's echoed them in my meeting with him earlier this week, and perhaps Devin can chime in. He's also reluctant that we could identify hazardous areas all across the city, and this annual review is good practice.
All right. Okay, we will be voting on that later today in our business meeting. Thank you, Jared. We are now moving on to item number eight, our dual-language immersion program review. Do you want to say anything first, or we'll just? Okay, we're gonna turn it over to Nate Mitchell, our Director of Assessments. And as he's coming up, just want to explain for the public that this is just part of a larger conversation we've started, but it will continue to be ongoing as we look at the use of our resources and our programs, and seeing how we can utilize them in the best way. So, go ahead, Nate. Gina, do you have the clicker?
And then do we have a presentation?
All right, Nate, Gina's bringing the clicker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you share your presentation with us?
Uh, there was in, should have been in Board Docs. There should have been a presentation.
Bonnie did. Looking for the presentation right now. Beautiful bird picture, though. All right, Nate is there bringing that up. Is there anything you want to start on?
I guess I can give some background on the purpose of this, maybe. We're investigating the dual-language immersion programs in Provo City School District. So, the data set that I'm using here spans 11 years worth of data. So, this longitudinal study using hierarchical linear modeling to try to ensure that we account for any confounding variables. And so, the idea here is to try to give as robust a picture of the state of dual-language immersion as we possibly can. Yeah, just as we investigate and study that. So, I received a list of questions through our superintendent from members of the board, and so, I'm just trying to, trying to address those questions that I received. Is there a sweet spot for pointing this? All right, the first sets of graphs, we're looking at two set, two different sets of bar graphs. The one on the left-hand side is showing the average class size of elementary classrooms across the school. The one on the right is showing the total number of students enrolled in dual-immersion programs by language. The total number of students in program by language, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. But let's go into the average class size by elementary. So, as a comparison, just using all schools' average class sizes. And then there's also some error terms there with those whiskers that show kind of the range in class sizes. Across the district, the average class size is 22.8. I did take, I did go through and remove any courses like special ed-specific course where they would have only four students or something like that in there. So, clean, that data was cleaned. So clean, that data was cleaned as much as I possibly could. This is as accurate as I can, as I can do with the data set that I have to be able to get it to regular, traditional classrooms. And then, so we have, the average across the district is 22.8 students. If it's a DLI school, so that includes non-DLI classrooms and DLI classrooms, the average is 23. If it's a non-DLI school, the average class size is 22.7. And then comparing just DLI schools, DLI classrooms versus non-DLI classrooms within that building. So DLI classrooms in a DLI school is 24.2. And non-DLI classrooms in a DLI school is 21.9. So those are just some kind of descriptive statistics of our class sizes. All right, one of the questions that was asked was, and I'm taking some liberty here in interpreting this, is outside of dual-language immersion, within a dual-language immersion school, so the non-dual-language immersion classrooms, are there pairs of teachers, or are the teachers kind of isolated? Is there just one non-dual-language classroom as opposed, in contrast to the two, two teachers in the two-way dual-language immersion classrooms? So we can see here Canyon Crest does have just a single teacher per grade level outside of the dual-language immersion pair of teachers. And then Timpanogas had one instance of that happening. And Wasatch had three out of their six classrooms where that was the, was the case. But by and large, most schools have multiple teachers that are teaching non-dual-language immersion classrooms opposite the dual-language immersion strands. All right. This, these two charts are an attempt to address the question as to whether or not interest in dual-language immersion programs has declined. So what we have here is a set of two graphs. One is just first grade, that's the entry year for dual-language immersion. And then I also tracked second through sixth grade kind of as a total, just to compare and contrast those. And we can see that those trends are very similar, whether we're talking just the first year entrance in first grade, or if we're talking generally the whole, the whole program, sorry. And then there's a set of blue bars and a set of orange bars. So the set of blue bars is all of the historic data I have for that dual-language immersion program. Each program starts at a different year. Some, some of the DLI programs didn't start, they didn't all start at the same time. So historic just means as far back as I have data for what was the, kind of the, the average enrollment. Then I compared that to the most recent three-year average to try to compare and contrast whether or not we're losing interest in those programs. Notably, Wasatch has a big discrepancy in their historic average versus their three-year average. But Wasatch also historically had multiple strands of dual-language immersion. We've gone down to one strand. And also, the class sizes were restricted by the district office. So it's, it's not cut and dry there that that's a factor of non-interest. It could be factors that relate to policy. All right. So there's some stats language in here, and I'll, and I'll do my best to kind of break this down. I did a, a multinomial logistic regression to identify, are there any predictors?
That's not like a fifth grader.
Yeah, that's not a fifth grader.
That makes sense.
And so ultimately, what I'm trying to identify is what are the predictors of whether or not students are in the program? I also did this for whether or not students attrit out of the program. So trying to follow attritters. Number one says that the best predictor of student choosing to participate in DLI is if the program is offered in their home boundary school with an R squared value of .76. What that's telling us is there's variance. There's difference in whether or not a student is from that school, or they're choicing in. And R squared value is telling us how much of that difference is explained. Sorry, this is motion activated as well. So 76% of the variance is explained by whether or not it's a home boundary school. 50%, we would consider a strong indicator. So this is a very strong indicator that by and large, students choose dual-language immersion if it's an option at their home boundary school. Then we tried to track.
So Nate, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So is it, is it a reasonable assertion to say that we would need to be careful if we started looking at magnet sites? Because the idea would be these people are choosing it because it's a local school and it's an opportunity that's offered at their neighborhood school, not something that they would seek out at a different location?
Yeah, the data here would reasonably suggest that, that going to a magnet site would reduce interest in the program.
Can I ask another clarifying question on this?
Yeah.
Was this R2 the same at each DLI school?
I didn't break down a specific R squared per building during this, this study. But that's something I can probably look into. This is whole, whole district, all DLI programs. And then trying to track, I guess one other point here is I didn't really have longitudinal boundary data. I just had single-year boundary data to base this off of. So another data point that I have that, that also backs this up is as I tracked students who attrited out of the DLI program, the vast majority of those students attrited back to their same school. So longitudinally, the only, the only way I really have to track that is if those attritters left the DLI program and switched schools. By and large, students who leave the dual-language immersion program stay in that school, making an assumption there that the reason is because that's their home boundary school. All right. Now trying to track DLI longitudinally, how many students are completing this program? Two and three are inherently connected here. But if I take any student first through high school career, if they were ever in dual-language immersion, did they complete, or not complete, but were they officially enrolled, enrolled in bridge, ever, right? So ever a DLI student or ever enrolled in bridge, 39% of students who were ever enrolled in DLI were also enrolled in bridge.
Can you give just a quick summary of what bridge, the bridge program is?
There may be somebody better suited for that. But bridge is a concurrent enrollment class that is kind of a culminating class at the end of the dual-language immersion program. But Superintendent, it sounds like you.
Yeah, so it's a 3,000-level course in the language, which we traditionally don't allow in concurrent enrollment. It's one of the assurances that is part of dual-language immersion is that they can take those 3,000-level courses. Any student who passes the AP exam for a language, if the school offers those bridge courses, can enroll in those courses. And the goal is, is that you would complete three bridge courses by the time you're exiting from high school. Some may only complete two and some maybe one, but in general, it's two or three. And it gives them, I think they're only six credits short of a minor in that language at the university level, so.
And then did I see another question? Okay. And then number three, one of the questions was asked specifically about are students staying in DLI during middle school and during high school? Now that 39%, the vast majority of students, as number three on this slide indicates, vast majority of students who leave dual-language immersion leave during first, second, or third grade. Tracking students past their grade is not statistically significant. If students make it through third grade, by and large, they're sticking with the dual-language immersion program. So that percent of students in bridge is really, comes down to whether or not we kept them through third grade. Can we advance this one here?
Nate, can I ask really quickly?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm slow to think here. So what you're saying, that 39%, if, or if students stay through third grade, there's most likely, when you say continued DLI, that means through high school or just through elementary?
Through high school.
Through high school, okay.
Yep. Now, as Superintendent mentioned, there is a little bit of a gatekeeper there with the bridge course, is that AP test. So that's one thing that I, I don't really have stats for this, is how many students are passing the AP test in order to be eligible for that bridge class.
Traditionally, our passage rates in Chinese are low, lower than they are in Spanish and French. And so you're seeing a higher, a higher rate of students finish bridge courses in those other two languages. And I don't know about Portuguese, that would be something we'd need to look at. I'm not positive about those numbers.
So yeah, I think it'd probably be worth doing some investigation into those AP and bridge courses, the relationship there. Okay, this is kind of the meat of, of the longitudinal study. This is the, that hierarchical linear model that I, that I kind of prefaced with. If you'll notice over there on the y-axis, this says predicted scores. These are not averages of what students have done. These are if we controlled for all of the known covariates like socioeconomic status, ML status, you know, any, anything that we have in our database. And then it also takes into account, every measure is gonna have a certain degree of standard error. And so it takes that standard error into account and creates what it would say is a noise-reduced prediction of student scores. So what we can see here from this is that there is certainly.
Can you just clarify score on what?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, so this is the Acadian's days subset, subtest. Specifically, the days subtest was selected because it, it is a continuous scale. And it's offered multiple times through the year. I don't have really any other assessments that I can do this type of longitudinal assessment for because we just don't have the data points for it. Or like this end-of-level state tests, the scale changes from year to year. So the, the, the scale score on the science test, for instance, or the reading test, is not the same from third grade to fourth grade, so I can't use it for a longitudinal study.
And what grade does the Acadian's days?
So we, the state requires Acadian's testing in grades kindergarten through third grade. Provo School District, we've also opted to do fourth through sixth grade. The days assessment kicks in at third grade. Is that right? Third grade, or is it second grade? Days?
It's days.
Third grade. I thought it was third grade, okay. So this, this data set is for third through sixth graders. Thank you for asking that, that's a good clarifier.
Sorry, is the 10, 15, 20, is that a percent or an actual score or?
So this, this would be the scaled score on the days assessment.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Is there a reason why we're looking at a predicted score instead of actual data on how our students are doing?
Yeah, so this is taking their actual scores and then removing noise through this, through this modeling process. So it takes into account all of those covariates we talked about. So the socioeconomic status, ML status, special ed status, the size of the classroom, basically any, any kind of what we call a confounding variable that could possibly affect a student's score is modeled in here. And then it's, it sets a standardized baseline for each of those subpoints. And so what it's trying to do is say, all things equal, how well does your target population fare? So it, we could produce this with just average raw scores, and it would probably look very similar, similar to this in all honesty. But this is a little bit more statistically sound way of doing a comparison. So here we have a faceted line graph. We see pre-pandemic, during the pandemic period. The pandemic period is defined as the period of time where school was interrupted by either home or hybrid kind of learning. And then post-pandemic. And we can see a clear effect that we haven't recovered from, from that pandemic effect. All of those graphs shift down from pre-to-pandemic, and it's persisted through post-pandemic. Each of those lines represents a different target population. I was trying to, when I designed this, was working under the assumption that a student's ability affected whether or not they left dual-language immersion. So the hypothesis here would be students who are struggling learners are more likely to leave the DLI program, which would cause kind of a rebounding effect or improved DLI scores over time because the lower-performing students were leaving. So we're tracking three different groups to try to answer that question. We're tracking our DLI persisters, that's the blue bar or blue line. We're tracking the DLI attriting population, that's that green line. And then we're tracking our non-dual-language immersion classrooms in dual-language immersion schools. What the data comes out to say on this is those attritters have no effect. There's no significant effect on, on that. So the, the assumption there is wrong that DLI scores don't improve because low-achieving students are leaving the program. There is a selection bias to begin with. Students who are higher performing, or, sorry, students who select DLI tend to be higher performing. But the growth rates compared, comparing DLI programs to non-DLI programs are exactly the same. There's no significant difference. So whether you're in a DLI program or outside of a DLI program, you're getting similar growth, growth scores from either program. So it doesn't really matter if you're in a, a DLI program or outside of a DLI program. You're not getting an advantage or disadvantage. Okay, any questions on this one? All right, these next slides. Oops, I went backwards. Okay, these are kind of bonus. I, as, as I was doing this longitudinal study, I, I realized or was informed that we have two different Spanish immersion programs. One that's following the state model and one that is what I'm calling the Provo City School District model. I don't know that it's ever been defined. But I thought this was a great opportunity for us to compare whether or not these programs have different effects. So what we're looking at here is some just descriptive statistics showing the demographic differences between those two schools. The school with the Provo City School District model versus the school with the state model, we can see that the state model is not nearly as impacted as the school using the Provo City School District immersion model. Now, this is important to note because I would expect when comparing outcome results for these two schools, that there would be a significant difference in favor of the state model just based off of, off of the impact. Okay.
Can I point something out on this one?
Yeah.
The thing that's really interesting to me is the sped percentage in the non-DLI classes is almost three times as much.
Yeah, so I, I think that also is an indicator of that selection bias that we saw on the, on this previous graph. I think those families who have students that have an IEP, they kind of know what, what they can handle and what they can't. And so we're not seeing as many of those opt into the program, but that's an astute observation. Okay. Okay. So comparing these, this is, I apologize, the header there says Acadian's composite. This is days' scores again, so this is... Well, my scale is wildly different there. I'll have to look into this. Okay. It, it's possible that I did use composite scores here, which...
I think it's composite, right?
Yeah, that looks, the, the scale looks a lot more like a composite score than it does a day's score. So I'll have to go back and investigate this. Let's roll with it, though. So we've got, we, we did do this study using what looks like composite scores. I'll go back and, and evaluate this using days' scores. But what we found is no significant difference between the two programs. So whether you're at Canyon, or sorry, at the, at one, one of the Spanish immersion schools or the other Spanish immersion school, there's no significant difference between those two schools. The only significance that we had was the difference in ML outcomes in the DLI program. So you can see that the, the bar graph there for the, the first set of bars, that it's, if you're an ML student in DLI, it's better to be in the Provo-City School District model than it is to be in the state model.
So at Tempanogas Elementary?
Sorry.
So at Tempanogas Elementary?
Yes. So Tempanogas Elementary follows the Provo-City School District model and then Canyon Crest follows the state model. There are some differences with the other graphs. I'll, I'll just go back here and point out that in the state model, non-DLI classrooms, if you notice that 2% ML population, it's just a very small population. So even though we see kind of a big difference between ML students in the non-dual, dual-language immersion classrooms, there's just not significance there. There, there's not a, a large enough population to give us significance. So again, comparing these two models, flip a coin. It doesn't really matter, you don't, you're not advantaged or disadvantaged by going one over the other. I would say, though, again, I would expect there to be an advantage going to the state model school because the demographics favor, right? It's not as, nearly as impacted. So having no significant difference between these schools, I would say is pretty significant, right? A, a much more impacted school is not showing, is, is showing same results as a non-impacted school. Okay. Yeah.
So going back to the days' scores, do we do those scores on every student or just students at or below benchmark?
That's every student.
Every student, great, thank you. All right, what questions do we have, Renee?
I have...
Go ahead, Terry.
It's mostly a request. I think in the next boundaries, next time we have the boundary study on the agenda, if you go to the beginning, I think I, something I want to see is what's the difference between the different programs of how many Provo-City students that live in Provo and go to our schools versus how many students in each program come from outside of Provo?
Okay.
To be in these programs.
I would second that because I was going to ask the same question.
Okay.
Because that might affect a decision.
We already, we saw that data once, so maybe you just want to see it at the same...
Yeah, we want to have it clear. All right. Questions about these slides or other things we would like to maybe get some statistics on as we continue to discuss this? Gina?
So if, let's test my comprehension. Three, let's just, top three takeaways from this. Number one would be, not number one, but just one of the top three would be that the growth for DLI students is not any more significant than it is for a non-DLI student. And that is important because... Why is that important?
There's, there's, you're not disadvantaged by not being in the dual immersion program and you're not advantaged by being in the dual immersion program. And so it really just becomes, in that case, a, an option for parents. It's, it's, it's not going to, you wouldn't, you wouldn't sign up for dual-language immersion in the hopes that you're, it'll improve your student's score.
And, and there may be some parents who are enrolling them in that with the underst, with, with the belief that it will advantage their child academically in growth? Is that kind of what we're thinking?
Yes, that's, that's potential. The one caveat there is ML students in dual-language immersion are advantaged at the Provo-City School District model.
Okay. And that would have been one of my three, is that the ML students in the district are doing better than the state average and they're also not following the state program. Well, I would guess most of our ML students are at Tempanogas, in the Tempanogas program, not the Canyon Crest.
When you're comparing the ML students between Canyon Crest and Tempanogas, the ones that are at Tempanogas are doing better.
Okay. Okay. And then number three would be, I don't know what number three would be. That, that 39% of the students go through and complete the bridge program, which is a relatively low number?
About 100 kids.
About 100 kids, and so that's...
Each year are completing.
And we think that's a low number? Is that a low number? I don't know.
I don't know what to compare that against.
Okay.
I, I think it would also be...
It's about 10% of our graduates total.
Okay.
A little more than 10% of the graduates are graduating with that bridge designation coming from one of those dual-language immersions. So if you're thinking about that they're starting in elementary school and our total enrollment is constituting between 25 and 30%, and the actual graduate, the kids that are graduating is between 10 and 15%, so that will help.
Thank you. Did I miss anything for takeaways? Was that like some of the big, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding.
I think, I think the other, I think the big takeaway is the first one that you talked about is that people are putting their child in dual immersion almost as a type of de facto gifted and talented. And we're not seeing that it's actually helping their student grow at a higher rate than if they just put them in a non-DLI class. That is not having the impact on them. They are high-performing students and they stay high-performing students because they always have been high-performing students and continue to be. But the dual-language immersion is not pushing them like you would expect or maybe parents would desire from a program like that, especially if they're trying to look at it as more of a gifted and talented type of route.
And I, and I also think that our... Gaining a skill, right? That, that, they are gaining a skill, it's just not above and beyond that.
I, I think maybe another way to look at that is there, there maybe have been some assumptions that the, that the teaching on the target side language maybe isn't as good or that there's a difference between the instruction from target side versus English side. And we're, we're seeing that we're getting similar growth with dual-immersion programs versus non-dual-immersion programs. So there, the students are receiving at least same quality of, of, of learning in a dual-immersion program versus non-dual-immersion program.
Okay. Lisa, do you still have some?
Yeah. Thank you so much. I really appreciate this data. And I, I mean, I think what that tells us, exactly what you guys were saying in terms of some of the narratives that it challenges even within ourselves, but it also is a narrative around one aspect, right, of an advantage, if we're going to say advantage. You can't take this data and say anything beyond what's being measured K through six by that days' assessment, right? And so you can infer information around quality of teaching and opportunities for growth academically.
Right.
Being comparable. I actually thought it was encouraging to see the percent that, the majority of our students who are from this program are done, do that by third grade. Because I do think that we, people will say often, well, you get a bunch of kids who don't follow through. And I, I mean, that imprecise language kind of carries a narrative with it. But actually of the students who make it past third grade, we actually have a high percentage of students then who do, is that, I mean, that's what I'm seeing here, who do in fact follow this program through.
That's right.
And, and I think that's important to recognize as well.
Yeah. And the, the only significant predictor of students attriting out of that program was their early grade enrollment. So not scores, not special ed status, not...
Not which, which secondary school they...
That's right, not school. Yeah. And so, yeah, one of the other indicators was that when I tried to fit into the model, the, the site or the school as a, as a covariate, it said it didn't, did not improve the model. So another indicator that those two schools within our district are very similar.
Okay. Melanie, and then I've got a couple of things.
Okay. So this would be just a follow-up question that you probably don't have the answer for right now. So this, these numbers about sped on here makes me curious about the workload of the non-D, non-DLI teacher versus the DLI teacher, whether or not they have, how many 504s they have, how many IEPs they have, how many behavioral referrals they have. I'd like to see those types of numbers based on the two different types of teachers in the future.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a, that's a fair thing to look into.
All right. I just had a couple of follow-up questions I'd love to look into as we continue this discussion. So number one is we were talking about the, the high school students. I'd love to know the actual percentage who even take the AP test, who pass it, what their scores are. And then the other one, so I've been in some conversations over the last few years with just a desire to, how can we better support our multilanguage learners and our schools who have a lot of them? You know, what is the best way to do that? And then as we started this discussion of DLI and, you know, I've been curious, okay, how is the Tempanogas model working? And, and would that be something to maybe adopt into other Title I schools? I'm wondering if we could find effective ways to compare the scores of our DLI students at Tempanogas with our other Title I schools and see if we see a significant difference in achievement and in growth and things, so. All right. Thank you for all of your hard work in getting this data and adapting. You modified the presentation several times based on our questions coming in and we appreciate your quick response to that, so. Thank you. I'm sure we will be talking again as we continue this discussion, right?
Thank you.
All right. Our next item, number nine, is we are going to talk about assessments and the hours of instruction. And we're going to turn it over to our Director of Continuous Learning, Michelle Eldridge, to give this. And Wendy, would you just give a little background as to why you've invited Michelle to present this to us?
Yeah. So as I've gone out to listening tours, one of the, one of the things that I hear from teachers quite a bit is how much time is spent on assessment. I actually hear it from parents as well, just a concern about instructional time that might be lost, particularly with respect to progress monitoring, especially students that are below benchmark or way below benchmark and what that looks like for the teachers. So I asked Judy and Michelle and Michelle's team and Judy's team to help put together a presentation to kind of look at, what is the total amount of instructional minutes that we have? How much time is being spent on assessment at each of the levels? So that we can just, and this, and this includes things like calling the student up, gathering the papers, grading the papers, like it's not just the actual, this test takes one minute, but it's the, the actual minutes it takes to deliver and what that looks like to analyze those pieces. So just wanted to give you an idea about that and then some, to have a conversation about some of the things that we're doing as a team to address the concerns of teachers and principals. So we still have access to the data, but can do so without overwhelming our system in the process.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Michelle.
Wow, that's so small, there's no way I could...
I know, I'm so sorry. I actually asked...
What do you think? I have, I have...
I asked Ari, is it too small? And she said no.
There's beautiful colors across the top.
But she has like 20-year-old eyes. So it's okay, it's okay. You've seen it, Wendy. You've probably memorized it.
I might have seen it.
Okay. Chelsea, will you display the first sheet? Okay, that's it. Okay. So I just, before I start sharing some information with you, I want to do two things. First, I want to thank Doug and Nate and Judy and Tiffany. We really collaborated a lot on this, so I am the one with the microphone, but I was not alone in the work behind all of this. And that's really important for me to make sure you, as a board, know that I'm holding the mic, but I didn't do all the work. It took a lot of us. So I want to thank all of those team members for all the work that we spent trying to answer these questions. Secondly, I am a little bit worried that in our messaging about this information, that that will cause maybe some misinformation back to schools and teachers that we don't think this is an impact in their system, that testing has an impact because of what the graph looks like that we're going to show you. So I'm, I'm nervous that the message is going to be, oh, it's not that big of a deal, when it really is a big deal. And so I'm very aware of that and sensitive to that and want to recognize that though the minutes might not reflect what it feels like, that there is an impact in scheduling and making up tests and pulling kids from different places. And we recognize that and know that. Those things are also really hard to quantify when you're trying to explain data. So I just want to make sure that the messaging to our schools and teachers is we support you and we want to help with these things that they're feeling. And I don't want the numbers to reflect like, it doesn't look like it's an impact. So those are my two big asterixes, asterixes? I don't know what the word is.
I don't know what that word is.
All right, all right. I'll make one up. Okay. So before we go over the board docs, I want to go give you a little bit more background information. I appreciated Gina asking some questions and thought maybe I would give more background before we just talk about the data. So this first sheet that you're looking at, the physical copy and it's on, or do you guys see it on your screens? Oh, that's lovely. Nice job, Tech. Okay. So the first sheet that you're looking at right now are the required assessments. Column A are the SS, the acronym of the assessment. The highlighted yellow ones are highlighted because those are the tests we used to show you the, the time allocation. And the reason that we chose those ones was because they're required for all kids. All the other assessments that are not yellow on that first column A are for some students. Does that, just that part make sense? Okay. Column B tells you if it's a state-required test, a district-required test, or a federal-required test. So let me give you an example. Line nine, NWEA, that's a district-required assessment. Line 11 is the RISE assessment. That is a, so by federal law, states are required to have an annual assessment to measure student performance. So it's federal law, then the state puts it into law, so it's also state law. So you can just see the difference between, really as a district, we only have NWEA as a requirement as of this year and fourth through sixth grade Acadian's reading. There are no other quote-unquote "district-required", which I hate saying because we're all part of the district, so I don't know another way to say that, but district-required are those two. And then column G, or let's see, C tells you just kind of a overall purpose of the test, then the type of assessment, when it's administered, the different groups that take the test, and then the grade. So this sheet can also be a little misleading because you might look across a grade level, like fourth grade, and see all those check marks going across, or like Acadian's reading, and see a whole bunch of check marks and think, oh my gosh, that's so much testing. But what's important to see is column H that tells you what groups take those tests. So like, the Apple assessment is only for DLI students. So even though the checkbox is marked in third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade, it's only students in the DLI schools who take that test. Or let's see, the DLM test, line seven, that's the Dynamic Learning Assessment for students with significant learning disabilities. And only students who have that indicated in their IEP take that test. So the check marks in, you know, what is it, third through 12th grade are checked, or 11th grade. But that doesn't mean all those kids take it. It's just a small group of kids. So it can be a little like, holy cow, there's so much testing for a certain grade, but you have to really look at that subgroup to say, to understand that. So any questions about this sheet? I think that, does that help, Gina?
Thanks.
Yeah? Okay. All right. So that's the first page I wanted to show you. Okay. The second thing that we're going to look at is the instructional time, how we determined that. So Chelsea, will you open the instructional time sheet? Yep, that one. Oh. Nope. Instructional minutes. Sorry, Chelsea. Sorry, Chelsea. Yeah, that one, yep. Okay. So the second thing that we did then is, so we took the required assessments for all and then we looked at instructional minutes. So this is a document that Judy put together for us to see in one place instructional time allocations for each grade level. These come from the recommendations from USBE for elementary school. There's one little change on here I want to point out to you that's different from, I put in your board docs an FAQ with some questions and it had a screen capture of this image on it. And one correction that we made was for first grade recess. Years ago, it used to have forty minutes for first grade, many, many years ago. Recess was forty minutes for first grade. It no longer recommends forty minutes, it's twenty, so that's been adjusted here. It doesn't affect the data at all, but that is a minor change on there. So these are the recommended times from USBE. When we put the data in to calculate core time, we used Language Arts, Math, and Science because they are the required testing areas. So those are the core areas for elementary. So you can see column E is the total core instructional minutes. And then we have a document that we share as a leadership team of all the school schedules, elementary school schedules, which all really reflect these minutes, for the most part, very accurately. So that's the elementary core. To answer the question for what we determined for secondary core testing time, because we went with the tested areas, we chose ELA, Math, and Science to be considered our core areas in secondary. So when you looked at those pies, you probably were like, oh, there's so much elective time or so much blue time. And you're right, there is more because of electives, but because we're talking testing, we just went with tested areas to... Yeah? Okay. All right, so there's elementary instructional minutes. Any questions about these recommended minutes? So those are the data points that we get to for these, those little pies. All right, Chelsea, now we get to go to the pies. Okay, yep. All right, so let's talk through what this looks like then, based on those data points. So I'll just start with kindergarten. We did kindergarten, third, sixth, eighth, and tenth because they all covered pretty much all pieces of the testing. So kindergarten with their core instructional minutes is two hundred and five, remember core instructional minutes. That equals five hundred and eighty hours a year. And then the testing time was fifty-six hours per year. I'll show you a break apart of that data in a minute. And then the pie on the right just reflects those numbers. So you can see that testing, this includes progress monitoring, and I'll show you what that, how we calculated that in just a minute. So you can see the pie there of the core instructional time, little over half. Other time, which could include more core instructional time. So I might, as a kindergarten teacher, which most of ours do, have a lot of center time where they're continuing core instruction time or they're having social studies time that includes literacy time. So other is recess, social studies, art, PE, and any additional time I choose as a teacher to say, I'm going to do some more math or some more literacy, which I promise you all of our kindergarten teachers do. But I'm not reflecting that here because that's their quote-unquote "choice." If that makes sense, we just went with the recommended times. Any questions on kindergarten, just what that looks like? I will show you how we figured the math out in just a minute. All right, third grade, you can see the difference there of their core instructional minutes. They have more instructional minutes than their core instructional hours. And then their testing time, again, including progress monitoring. All right, Chelsea, will you scroll to sixth? Thanks. That core instructional time goes up again. I'm just gonna, it's the same-ish information. Questions on sixth? Okay, let's look at middle school. This one gets a little different. So with K three...
Can I just, can I say something? I think this is really profound. So people always ask, why is there a middle school drop? I would love for you to look at the number of instructional hours per year in core instruction between sixth grade and eighth grade. And we wonder why there is a dip that happens in middle school. It is because we are putting more emphasis into those elective courses and there is a lot less support in those core classes. So you do see that happening.
Can I follow up with that, though? This is a CMS student. Do we see a difference between the Shoreline?
You're gonna see all of them.
Yep, we did them all.
We did all of them.
We did all the things.
They're all there, yeah. What I want to point out also, before we talk secondary, is that in elementary, K three-six, we looked at what the teacher time looks like, which also was student time. In secondary, that was really hard to do because we're answering your question and the question about how much instructional time are we losing with giving these required tests. We are not talking about that good instructional practice involves assessing all day long. As a teacher, I'm constantly checking for understanding and I'm constantly giving, you know, assessments. This answers a question about these required tests, but not the bigger idea of assessment should happen all day long in all the things that we're doing. That's impossible to quantify how much time a teacher actually takes assessing. Like I, there's no way we could quantify that. We're quantifying these required tests, right? We're also quantifying it for elementary based off of a teacher schedule. For secondary, the only way we could do that was based off of a student schedule because of how the schedules work, right? And an example could be the NWEA this year. Not, the NWA assessments in secondary were given by different content teachers. So the, so I know at Timpu, I'm pretty sure, Darrell, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the social studies teachers helped give the language assessment. The science teachers gave some science tests, but so did other teachers. So it was, we can't quantify the teacher time that took because every school decided how to give those measures a little bit differently. Was that messy to explain that way? So elementary is very much the teacher time. Secondary is actually more like reflective of student time to take these tests. Okay, so eighth grade, if you'll, Chelsea, can you scroll up so we can see the, all the middle school on one page? There you go, yeah. Okay, thank you, Chelsea. So we have an eighth-grade Centennial student on the traditional schedule, an eighth-grade Centennial student on the gifted schedule, and then underneath that, a Shoreline student. Chelsea, can you make the view for me just a little smaller? So we can see all three. That little magnifying, oh, yeah, you're, I'm gonna boss her around on technology. Do you know why the mag, sorry, we're live, I'm not gonna... Thanks, Chelsea. Chelsea did say that if she messed up, she would buy me lunch, so I'm just like waiting for it, okay. All right, so, okay. So a traditional Centennial student, meaning they're not double, they are double-blocked. So at Centennial this year, they double-block in the core classes for math and reading. So that's why the schedule is a little bit different. So they have Language Arts and Math every day, Science every other day. That's traditional. In Centennial's gifted schedule, if I'm a student on that track, I have read, I have Language Arts, Math, Science every other day. So less core instruction time if I'm on that track. If I'm a traditional student, you can see how much more instructional time, core instructional time I have. Lisa?
Yeah, one question I have on that. I don't know how to get this closer and still see through the right part of my bifocal lenses.
Oh my gosh.
Okay. So it seems to me, you know, when we have our Centennial middle school students on that gifted schedule, well, it's clear that they have decreased core instruction time with the same amount of testing time required. So I would think that would move that percentage up higher because a higher percentage of that core instruction is spent because they are doing the same testing hours. So help me know why that isn't the case.
Because it's just their instruction in class. We're saying how much core instruction they have in class. They still have to take the same hours of testing.
Correct.
We're not taking it out of the class to test. We're just saying you have this much testing time.
Yes, but isn't it a bigger percentage of...
We didn't take it out that way.
The percentage is out of their total time in school, not their core time?
In school, okay, if not of their core instruction.
Correct.
Sorry, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Nope, that's a, that's, that's a great, great question. Great question, yeah. And back to kind of why I prefaced with this is student time, not out of their core class. Yeah, nope, that's a, that was a great question to clarify. Okay, and then the Shoreline student, you can see they have their reading or their Language Arts, Math, and Science every day for forty-five minutes and what that equates to. So just looking at the three kind of separate, obviously the five-by-five schedule. Well, you can see the numbers, I was gonna just go biased there. But I'll just be quiet. You can see where there's more core instruction happening. Gina?
Challenge, I just want to reiterate that. Help me understand, and maybe this is for a completely different conversation. If it is, just say, well, I'll talk to you later. But there's a big difference between two hundred and eighty-two for a traditional SMS student versus four hundred and twenty-five core instructional hours for Centennial. Is that part of this discussion or it just seems like that's a big discrepancy?
Wendy?
So it's funny that you should ask that because Darrell and I were having this conversation earlier today. When we start, this gives us some incentive for, say, for example, Shoreline to also look at their data and their student performance data to say, do we need to reevaluate the schedule and the amount of instructional time? That is a separate conversation that needs to happen, but it is one that's on our radar that we need to begin.
Putting things in a doughnut pie are really awesome, right? And also like, oh, oh, yeah. Okay, there's middle school. All right, Chelsea, we scroll down to tenth grade. We chose tenth grade because it really didn't vary much, well, yeah. Tenth grade was reflective of most of high school, so. And both of our high schools really were very, very, very close to the same. So this is our high school schedule. You can see, again, the core instruction lessons there with the electives. Okay. I want to just, I'm not going to go super detailed, but I do want you to see how we figured this out in case you have questions. And I can be happy to share this with you later if you have more questions. So Chelsea, we go back to that assessment, yeah. So Chelsea, will you just click on third grade? I'm only going to show you third grade unless you want to really nerd out and know the details. So I feel like for full transparency, it's important that you know how we calculated all of this information and what is averages and what's exact. We really, it was important to Judy and Nate and Doug and Tiffany and I to really not look at this from a lens as like a director, but like what is real for schools as best as that we, as best that we could. So I'm going to just walk you through what we did for third grade and it's essentially the same-ish for each grade. So the top section of this sheet right here is the benchmark testing. And by benchmark, we mean Acadents or RISE or NWEA. So given three times a year, different kinds of assessments. So Acadents Math is administered whole class. That test takes, there's two parts to Acadents Math. There's a six-minute assessment that gives whole-class administration and then a fourteen-minute assessment. We added minutes onto that to reflect passing out the papers, transitions, pencils, all the things. The tests actually don't take that long. They're timed tests and they take about one to two minutes to score each. That's, the scoring is not reflected into the actual instructional time because that's not what we were computing this time. We averaged about twenty-five kids, students per class for third grade just for, to get us an even number. We did, that is pretty reflective of most of our third grade across the district. Some is higher than that, some is lower, so we felt close to that. So the Acadents Math benchmark, because it's three times a year, takes sixty minutes total for a teacher or a student during the year. On a high end, because we've estimated quite high. Did that make, yeah? Okay. Acadents Reading Benchmark, three times a year, it's administered one-to-one. So different than math where I can give my whole class the test at once. Acadents Reading is one-to-one from one part of it. The second part of it is called the maze and that is actually a closed reading test and everybody can do that at the same time. So I give two pieces of that assessment. The one-to-one on the high end takes seven minutes per student. It's also timed, so you really can't take longer by choice. It's a timed test, but we included, again, pulling a student back to the table, saying, you can do this, Gina, I'm so excited to give you this test today, you're gonna mark your progress and it's gonna be the best thing ever. And then giving the test and then high-fiving and ringing a bell because they did so great. That's all of that, in my class, that's all of that.
In the seven, so the seven minutes includes the transitional student time?
Yep, 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 yep.
So that's not actually the timed...
Scored online, no. We did, we felt, Tiffany and I, as we were working on this, really felt it was important to be like, for real Z's, what's it gonna take? Like, let's, let's give you a, you know. And probably, yeah, yeah. And then the whole class is scored auto, they're both scored automatically too. The teachers are doing, are recording, but they don't have to take extra time later to score. So we multiplied that by, and we get the five hundred and twenty-five by saying there's twenty-five students in a class, seven minutes a test, three times a year, and then the fifteen minutes. So that's how we calculated Acadents Math and Acadents Reading for K three. Acadents Math doesn't happen in four through twelve, so that one would not reflect on those other tabs. And then we have ELA RISE and ELA RISE Math. Those are whole-class administration and ninety-ish minutes is probably the high end of those tests, actually. And then NWA Math, hundred and twenty minutes because it's three times a year, so three separate assessments of that during the year. And we actually, NWA assessments, Nate helped us pull some data on averages across the district of what it was taking our students, not just what the NWA says it's going to take. So we erred on overestimating those times too. So our total benchmark minutes are nine hundred minutes, which equals fifteen hours. So we took the instructional time and the testing time and that's how we came up with how much of core instructional time is taken with the core, with the benchmark assessment. Did I nerd out too much on you on that information? Meg's like, yes, okay. All right.
She loves it.
All right, Chelsea, will you go up to progress monitoring? So here's where things get tricky. So this is obviously the big question, the thing in the listening tours that Wendy has heard. I know many of you have heard about progress monitoring.
Scroll down in the doc.
Yeah, there you go, Chelsea, yeah. Progress monitoring is almost impossible to quantify because every class in every school looks totally different. So it's really, really, really hard to say this is how much time it takes to progress monitor because it depends how my students are performing in my class. If I have a class full of twenty students who are mostly green and blue, I don't progress monitor very often because I don't have to progress monitor as often. If I'm in a class where lots of students are below benchmark, I progress monitor much more often. So the way progress monitoring works for both reading and math is if I'm below benchmark, I'm progress monitored every two weeks. Well below, if I'm below, every four weeks. If I'm green, every six. If I'm blue, once between benchmarks. So if I have a class with lots of red, I progress monitor a lot more because they're probably, those students should be in intervention. So I think of progress monitoring as checking to see if my instruction, if they're making progress, right? So all students should get it, but how often they get it depends on how they're performing, which means every class across the district looks totally different. So here's how we quantified that. We basically said average twenty-five kids per class and we looked at the most extremely impacted classrooms to err on the side of the most progress monitoring. So we went with a class that has fifteen reds. Chelsea, can you scroll to the right just a smidge so I don't say the numbers wrong? Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. There we go, there's my notes. Fifteen reds, four yellows, three greens, and three blues. So we went with like, what would be the most progress monitoring that could be happening in a classroom? And this was probably the most that we saw. Therefore, these hours and these minutes are way higher than average. Did that come out clear? Okay. So now, Chelsea, can you go back the other way? So my notes in column, whatever that is, E, are just noting how often students would be progress monitoring and what that math looks like. So for math, it's eighty-five minutes. For Concepts and Applications, it's two thirty-eight. You can see the numbers there. ORF is the one-on-one assessment. I'd be giving that, I'll walk you through that one. I'd be giving that to my red students every two weeks, so it would take nine hundred and fifty-four minutes. Now, I will do a big fat asterix here. If this is third grade and I have fifteen students who are well below red, I'm not progress monitoring them on the third grade skill. This is why it gets really complicated to quantify. I'm actually going to progress monitor them... I'm actually going to progress monitor them on the skill I'm intervening them on, which is a first or second grade skill, which is a shorter test. So, we've overestimated the time here by saying, you know what? We're just going to say they're all taking the 3rd grade assessment, but in reality, they're actually taking a shorter, quicker assessment. We just had to do it to get, to get a number that reflected-ish. And then the whole-class maze, which I wouldn't give to red students every two weeks probably because that wouldn't be probably appropriate for where they were at. But we pretended like we did on this to give you a data point. So, progress monitoring is super tricky to quantify, but we feel like we've kind of overrepresented to give a number that felt like safe for everybody. What gets hard with progress monitoring is teachers needing support with when do I do it? And help me with the schedule to do it, and then why do I do this? And so, I love it when schools call and say, will you come work with our first-grade team and help us with a schedule for progress monitoring? And why they're frustrated with it. And Tiffany and I both, our experiences when we were working directly with teachers and teams who ask those questions, it always goes great. They always have the big, "Oh, I get it now." Whereas if they're just told to do it and they don't understand, then that's, that's where the frustrations happen for sure. So, we love it when people ask for help on these things because we have some tools to help them definitely manage the time and what it looks like. Do you have anything you want to add to that? I told her to talk and she's not going to do it, so. Okay, so that's progress monitoring, and it's a similar for K as well, just a little, little tweaks.
Michelle, will you speak to, one of the things we hear at listening tours a lot is, I used to have my aides do this progress monitoring. Why do I need to do, why does the teacher need to do this? This is taking time away from me to instruct students. I can look at the data just as easily if my aide gives it to me.
Yes, I love this question. So, the purpose of assessment, any assessment, is for the teacher to be able to respond to the student's needs, right? Progress monitoring in particular, any of the Acadents, but in particular, when you're giving any of these assessments, you're listening to a student perform reading tasks, right? So, if I'm a kindergarten teacher and I'm working on phoneme segmentation or first sound fluency, and I've been working on that with a student, me progress monitoring that student to listen to, can they identify the first sounds in this word? Is very different than a para giving the test and coming back to tell me a score on that test. If I'm the teacher and I hear, oh, gosh, they're still not, they still can't hear the sound, pf, right? Then I, that's very different. Or maybe they aren't blending, or maybe they're putting a schwa on the end of every sound. An instructional assistant can give me a great score and be trained to give me a score on the test, but the teacher hearing or seeing what that error the student is making in their reading instruction, then I can adjust my instruction based off of what I see and hear. If an instructional assistant just gives me a score, I don't see that information the same way. Yeah?
Can you use a mic? Thank you.
Even with like a reading fluency test, sometimes you don't hear all of the things students are adding to the passage. Their accuracy score could look really low. For example, my son's accuracy looked really low, and then when I listened to him read, I'm like, oh, he's adding S to every single word. That's weird. And so, if I didn't listen to him read, I wouldn't be able to see that he's adding S and making everything go plural, but that's something I can instruct him on and change it. So, it gives you a future of like, okay, as we move forward, I'm going to work with him in all these areas of eliminating that S. But you wouldn't get that if you weren't the one actually listening to the test.
And you might.
And you might, if you only saw that low accuracy score as a teacher or as a PLC team, you just saw the score, you might make a wrong instructional placement in an intervention and think, oh, they need quick reads because they need this fluency and they need to get faster when it's like, oh, nope, he just needs to be told to quit saying ass on the end of every word and not be in that group. So, that's a great example. Did that answer your question, Wendy?
I think the other question we get a lot of is schools that have really highly impacted populations like this, what are some of the things that you can do that we help, that we can help schools with to help schedule this? Like, you showed me how you're doing a couple of kids each day. You're not trying to do 30, you know, 17 kids in one day and trying to figure out, well, what am I going to do with the rest of the class while I progress monitor these 17 kids? And then how that helps them place them into interventions? Because that was really powerful for me to see that.
Yeah, so, one thing that we like to do really is help teachers with their plan for progress monitoring. One thing that schools have done traditionally for many years is provide teachers extra, provide extra planning time. And then maybe on Fridays, they have 30 minutes to pull their kids to progress monitoring, which is a great thing to try to do. What that does often is overwhelm a teacher because then on Friday for 35 minutes, I have to test all these kids. And that is overwhelming no matter what. What we suggest is that you spread that out during the week and you make instructional decisions all week long as you learn more information about your kids. So, we do this banking activity, we call it, or a calendar mapping where we have them look at their kids in Acadence, and then we have them plan for two weeks and literally map out, I'm going to do these two kids on this day, these two kids on this day, these two kids on this day. I don't know if I can pull that document up.
It's all right.
Is it okay? Okay.
You're explaining it well.
Am I explaining it okay? So, instead of all my kids to be progress monitored on one day, I do two or three every day, and I adjust my instruction the next day once I progress monitor them. Instead of waiting to do all my kids on Friday, so this example of this 15 students in one class, this is a real example of a class improvo. And it looks, it, it would be so overwhelming to do that every Friday to test 10 or 15 kids, but I can do two a day. I can do three a day. And if I'm just doing the ORF, which is technically, well, actually, I would be doing probably first sound fluency or something else, which is a one-minute test, I can do a one-minute test. I can do that as a bell ringer when the students are getting their backpacks put away and doing something quiet for the first 10 minutes of school. I can pull one student back to my desk every single day and do one quick assessment with them that takes one minute. I can do a one-minute quick assessment after lunch. I can do a one-minute or two-minute assessment before I teach my small group. I can say, Terry, it's your turn today. Woohoo, come on back. And we're going to give your quick check-in and high-five you and ring your bell because you're going to make your growth in my class. It's going to be awesome. And then, we're going to get to work in our intervention group. That is more, I think, it's easier to manage when you look at it like that, like that way. And schools that we've been asked to come in and help with make these schedules have responded very well to that support and help. So, that's one way to do it. It doesn't make it all easy. I just made it sound all super easy, and it's not super easy all the time for everybody.
Do we have other questions for Michelle about this information?
Lisa has her hand up.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Lisa.
Just a couple of observations. One is, I was looking first just at the hours per year from K, and I was like, wow, kindergarten has like 50% more hours than 3rd grade and kind of processing that. But then I, and then I was looking down at first and thinking, gosh, by the time they're a little more able to self-manage through a testing situation at such a small amount of hours. But then I realized, just so anyone who's consuming this data maybe might, they probably already thought this, but I, I hadn't, is that actually, while that is, your percentage, I now understand, is total instructional time, probably that testing is happening during those core instructional hours. And so, for those teachers, it's going to, I mean, most often, for my kids, so that's anecdotal, that testing is being done in their English class or in their math class or in their science class. And so, that makes it feel a little bit more of a, of a time piece, right? When you're not factoring in the time they're spending in all of their elective or other classes.
For secondary.
For secondary, right. So, I'm just thinking that through so that someone looking at this isn't thinking. Because when I first just looked at that, those hours and tried to compare them from kindergarten through 10th grade, I was like, whoa, wait a minute, our youngest kids. But, but they're actually, if you look at the percentage of that instructional time, like it's consolidated into just a few classes once you get to secondary.
I put it down as a to-do that we'll get with you so that you can see what that looks like because you're correct. It's going to be a larger chunk. It's going to be a bigger percentage, and it will feel more accurate. It will feel and be more accurate to teachers or experience.
It is why Lisa, like Timpew and Shoreline, for sure, that I know for sure, had other subject areas help with the NWEA. So, it wasn't all felt on the ELA department to do the RISE plus three measures, actually six because NWA is the language and the reading. So, I know that that's why, is that that was spread apart in some places, but you're right.
I'm not even really making a point as much as just thinking that through out loud in case someone's looking at that data in that same way.
Yeah, yeah. Gina?
So, to assess my comprehension once again, the takeaway from this would be that the assessment time, including additional things for pulling kids and everything, should be doable in the classroom. However, there are other variables, like, like they can reach out to the district, help me understand what, so if teachers are watching this, what is the message perhaps? I mean, I don't know if you're the one to do that, but what's the message we want the teachers to hear?
For me, it's let us help you. We don't know you're, you need the help if you don't tell us that you need the help, right? And I think that's from at least our department, and I know Judy's department feels exactly the same way as does Nate. Like, we're very aligned in this, that if we are here to help you and we want to help you, and help doesn't mean coming in and be like, you're going to do it. It's like, walk me through what your frustrations are. My own personal experience with this is there is a why conversation. Why am I using this assessment? And me not trying to convince you, but to help you see how this applies to your instructional impact and a how do I fit this in? Once I know my why, usually the scheduling part is it, sometimes it's just a scheduling. Sometimes it's like, I totally get it. I just don't know how to fit it in. So, we don't know how to help if we're not aware that there needs to be a help besides, this just sucks. We don't want to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can, can I just add something to that? I, I feel, I feel like this was really important because I kept getting approached by it, by teachers who were talking about this and by parents. And principals started to say, because they're going to be defenders of their teachers, saying, this is a lot. And I felt like the data that we were getting from it was really valuable. So, I felt like a group of us needed to understand where we were coming from. And then our goal is to take this to principals at our May Institute in, next week so that they can get their eyes on this and understand the why behind it and then give us feedback about what supports do they need as they help to roll this out because we all have to be on message here. And so, if there are things that we still haven't, we're still overlooking, we need to have their feedback. I want a constant feedback loop between the schools and us because right now, to them, it feels like it's very much us telling them what to do. There's got to be some opportunities. So, I also wanted us to demonstrate that we were trying to address the concerns that were being brought up as well.
I think also, when you remember that sheet I shared at the very beginning of what's required from WHO, we're federally and state mandated to give most of these assessments. And they don't get, even those don't give us all the information we need, which is why the NWEA. And then also to Wendy's point, an example of something that just happened recently was a team that, I totally just lost my, it's gone. It was a really good one.
Well, there was one in Westridge that was awesome.
I was going to say something else that we fixed or that we helped a team with.
Oh, I know. One big thing that, an example was that there was a team, a kindergarten team, that was like, I cannot progress monitor. It's sucking my life away, was exactly what they said. And I pulled up the class data and I was like, you have like one red kid. What do you mean it's sucking your life away? For reals, there was like two red kids in her whole class. And I was like, okay, tell me more about why this is sucking your life away. Tell me more. I learned she was progress monitoring all 23 kids every week. Well, yes, that is sucking your life away to do that. And so, it was a great opportunity to say, oh, you know what? That's probably not best practice. And, and it was a good conversation because she was like, no, I have to know how they're doing. I have to know. And I'm like, but you don't. You already know how they're doing. So, it was a great conversation, but a good example of this feedback loop of like, someone listened to like, oh, they want to help. Okay, I'll come and help, but my role is to help talk you through it and listen to your frustration and help you. And then all of a sudden, it was like, oh, I'm, her whole progress monitoring schedule and the whole team's schedule changed, but they didn't know, they didn't know, if that makes sense. They thought, I have to progress monitor everybody all the time. And the relief of like, oh, no, that's not, that's actually not how the assessment's designed. You're actually doing it wrong if you're doing it that way. So, Lisa.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, I would love to know then, like from feedback from teachers, what is it beyond the minutes being spent on the test though? To the point you made at the very beginning of this, there is something really challenging, I think, from our teacher's perspective around getting through and feeling like they're completing all of the testing that's required as well as needed for, for them to do their job. And so, what other pieces beyond the minutes spent doing it come into that feeling of overwhelm and/or load placed on them through, through these requirements and also the things they're trying to do? And I just think that might be useful information as well, right? Like, well, it's seven minutes, but somehow it ends up taking this much of my day for the following reasons. And I don't know what those reasons are, but I, I think it would be great to solicit that feedback in more detail from teachers.
We actually have that, and I can give you that a little bit, that when asked to help with that, what we learn, Tiffany, jump in. What we learn is usually there's a scheduling problem, and usually they're administering the assessment incorrectly. So, it's over-assessing or it's time of day where it's like they're trying to squeeze it in. And that's not a blame statement, but in my experience, it's usually like just talking them through, tell me what this is looking like for you, and them realizing, oh, okay. So, but that's when we get asked to help, right? Like, if we don't know that there's a need to help. Oh, Tiffany's totally right. The why. Tiffany just said how to use the data. If they don't know how to use it, then no matter what the schedule looks like, it's pointless and frustrating.
I would, I would add, I love what Wendy was saying, that, that it sounds like there's going to be some more focus on, we need to be, we have some really great, you have some amazing suggestions, tips and things. So, how do we systemically teach all of our teachers and our, teach our principals to follow up and check in and get that feedback loop? How are they doing? How are they feeling? Do you need some support? Those kinds of things, and also continue to message that why. It's interesting, I've been to the Timpew School Community Council a lot this year, and the teachers in that room are like, the NWA, it took us a minute, but we love it. It's fantastic. So, I'm like, oh, great, Timpew's on board. They love it. And then my daughter, just the other day, said, well, a certain teacher said, I tried really hard to get you guys out of having to take this test, but here you go. You have to take it. And I was like, oh, okay, not, not all of them get it yet, right? Like, even in a school where we think we're on, we got to keep finding a way to share that, the, the why and the benefit for them and how to make their lives easier doing it, yeah.
How does it impact your instruction? How do you use it for instruction, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you. Was there anybody else? No, we're good. Okay. Thank you, Michelle, for that. Appreciate that. We're going to move on to item number nine, which is all about the budget with Devin.
Oh, financial fun with you.
Financial fun with Devin.
Where would you like me to stand? Do you want me to be down there or do you want me to, on the table is not an option.
Do you guys have a preference?
Well, it would be easiest.
Where's easier for you to point to things and explain?
Well, I don't think anybody's going to see me pointing at my screen except for Lisa, but if I stand down there.
Great, come on down. Come on down. You're the next contestant on Financial Fun with Devin.
Would you like me to stand up and point? I'm pretty tall.
I'll just describe.
Only if you dance at the same time.
Okay.
It can be banned away.
As long as it's Wendy dancing and not me, we're good.
It's on. You just have to hold it really close.
I have, oh.
Yeah.
Microphones and I don't get along very well. So, I'm just going to go through, this is kind of a high level. This is not for approval. This is just a review of what we're looking at for the final budget for FY '25 and the tentative budget for FY '26. So, as we go through, if I don't spend a lot of time on something specific, come meet with me individually or send it to me. And when we do our final approval on the FY '25 budget in June, we can go through it with a little bit more detail. So, this budget does one of two things. It finalizes our FY '25 budget and it creates the FY '26 tentative budget with the plan of a truth in taxation this year. And I have the information, more detail on that of what that will look like for residents. And then we can go through some of the, some of the specifics to that. So, we're just going to jump straight into taxes first because that's always what people want to hear the most about. So, go ahead. Oh, that's right. I have a clicker. So go ahead, oh, that's right, I have a clicker. Can I just say, go to the next one and then you guys will click for me? Perfect, thank you. So this is our property tax rates over the last 10 years, starting in tax year 2016 to projected 2025. So we're always a year off on our tax year as opposed to our fiscal year, so it's intermixed within, just know that the projected is this next year, and the year before is the year, current year we're in. So you can see, all the way back in 2016, our rates were a double oh seven eight eight three, which if we applied to our valuation now would be a large amount of money. But as those valuations go up through the city, those rates are driven down based on those increases. Over the years, except for one very significant year, you have about a five to 11% increase on valuations every year. When you're looking at the year 2022, where it jumped from 7.8 million to 10 million, that's a 27% increase. And when you follow it over, and that's just barely over 2 million, or about $2.2 million, if you follow that over to the residential side, that increased 1.6 million. So a significant portion of that increase between that 2021 and 2022 tax year was residential. We dropped in the centrally assessed, and that's a different kind of tax. So when you're looking at tax rates, you look at residential, industrial and commercial and agriculture, that is what determines our tax rate, not the personal property or the centrally assessed, those are separate. Then when you take those three, you multiply that valuation by, usually it's between 95 and 96% because of the exemptions that happen in residential. A lot of times are the exemption pieces of our redevelopment projects and the additional amounts that we don't collect. So the general idea of collection every year is about a 95 to 98% collection rate. So there are that many properties that go without paying for their property taxes. So as they're setting the rates, they will back out some of that taxable so that we will receive the amount of tax that we are asking for. The personal and the centrally assessed are separate to that, and that is where we come up with the total taxable value. So for example, this year, in our current fiscal year FY25, our taxable value that our rate was based on was $9.9 billion, and our total taxable value within the city is $11 billion. So there's that difference for those exemptions and for some of those like personal that's not included in our rate. So we do receive revenue, so when you look at our funds like our debt service, we are required to give the county our debt service schedule so they can tell us exactly how much they need to tax for, but we will then also receive some personal and centrally assessed and the fee and lieu for some of that, which then can be used, the only thing it can be used for is either pay off debt early, which we don't have any debt currently that we can pay off early, or tech equipment, which is one of the things that's helped our budget not needing to do quite as big of a tax increase. So I took the trend of the last three years of what that increased taxable value is, which is about 5%, which is what is reflected in the taxable value for this next year. And when we take the revenue that we are needing, you know, the amount that we're doing a truth in taxation for, our new rate would be .007271. So let's go to the next slide, and then it'll detail it out just a little bit more. So these are our rates. So you can see in the 2025 year, and that is this year, so I put the wrong tax year on, it's supposed to be fiscal year. This .007208 is our tax rate this year, that next year is that .007271. When you look at the rates that we actually have control over, all of them are going down except for capital. The biggest increase in our tax rates is the basic program, which is set by the state. Right now, they're, in the law that they passed in this past legislative session, they set a benchmark of .001484. And if Terry remembers, I promised it wasn't gonna change again, but it did like three times, and so I'm not gonna promise anything. That rate is based on last year's valuation, so that is inevitably going to go down. So we will likely, I'm not gonna guarantee it, because I got in trouble the last time, but we will likely end up with a lower tax rate than we have this year, even with the tax increase. When I talked to the county over the last, well, today, I talked to the county today about what the valuations are looking like, because last year, a lot of homes went up or stayed flat. This year, there is an increase. Interestingly enough, and Steve, and first of all, I forgot to mention, my team are rock stars. There's no way I could have pulled this all together without them. So Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, the median and the mode of those, of the homes, there's almost $100,000 difference between that median and the mode when you're in the city. So you, so right now, and it's lower on the mode, mean, sorry, mean and median, so on the mean, you have that middle number, you line all of the valuations of homes in the city, and it is almost $100,000 less than that median, which is the average. So that means that there are a lot of homes that are a lot more expensive in Provo, and there, more than half the homes are below that average. So when you're looking at the next page, I'm kind of splitting the difference between them, and I believe for the 2025 tax year, it's 442,000 is the mode, and, or the mean.
Steve, she's looking at you for clarification.
Yeah, so 442,000, look at my email I sent you. And then the median is 511,000. For this year, it should be 511, there's one that's 511. So you can see that with those, those expensive homes are driving that average, so I used kind of a mid number so that it didn't look quite as startling. So if, when we talked earlier, the $25 a year was based on no changes in homes, but I have been told that the most, a lot of the homes within Provo have gone up just a little bit. So that is, the new numbers are reflective of that. So let's skip to the next, well, are there any questions so far?
I would like you to repeat the numbers for the mean, median, mode of the last five years.
No, because there's too many Ms in there, so I, I can give you the number, I can't give you the definition of the word. Okay, so the next, so no questions? So this is kind of a messy graph, but if you look up at the top, this year, our average home value was 481,777, and with our tax rate, the amount of property tax was 1,910. So going through this, it makes me, it makes me just, that tax increase between 2022 and '23 for those bonds, that was a large amount. So I can understand the residents' concerns and saying, my tax rates went up huge, and they really did. That's why I'm trying to make them very, very smooth when we do it, so that there isn't any large changes like we did. The issue was, is that there wasn't a ton of property tax changes, large ones before that for years and years. And so we're just now trying to even it out. So you can see even with those, the last three years, the '24, '25, or those two years, there wasn't a property tax increase, we didn't do a truth in taxation, but taxes still went up, either because A, our debt service went up, or B, there was growth, and so there was a little bit more, or there's several different reasons, most of it is the basic rate, or it is that debt service.
Because it wasn't the basic rate the state set that increased significantly in the last few years, right?
Yep, the last few years, so if you go back.
Brought in money for a specific programmer.
Go back a slide, Chelsea. So if you look at the number of the basic rate, so it was 1662 in 2022, '23, dropped to 1406, went up to 1408, now they're projecting it to go 1484. So here's something with the WPU and what taxpayers have to understand. So when you're looking at like the basic program, if we bring in more because of that personal property and the centrally assessed, all that happens is our state revenue goes down. And you'll see that on the next slide as we're starting to look at next year's budget. So, yes. Okay, now let's go forward. So you can see over the last four years, we've really tried, the green line is our property tax rate, and the orange and blue are the taxable versus the value of the home. So those are our average, you can see over the last four years, that average has really stayed fairly flat besides that one year in 2023, the 2023 tax year. Okay, let's go forward. So now let's talk about the WPU. This year, our WPU increased 4%. And as I've talked about, if you watched Financial Fund with Devin, the WPU doesn't mean that our whole budget goes up 4%. The WPU means that just that state portion of what they fund us for went up 4%. If our budget were to go up 4%, we'd have to increase property taxes 4%, and we'd have to get a 4% increase from federal revenue. And that is not gonna happen in this political climate. So this year, we got a 4% increase in our WPU, which equated to $180 per student. And when you look at the big picture, that WPU funding, just the straight funding is about $2.5 million. So not a ton of money with all of the needs that a school district our size has. Any questions? Because I am down to like five minutes. So we'll go through it quick, I might take a little bit of the policy time, darn it. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So I'm gonna skip this one, because we all know our enrollment's flat, and you can see where the, there's one thing I'd like to point out on this, you can see the K6 enrollment, while we had e-school, was significantly higher. When we took e-school away, our secondary schools did not change, in fact, some of them went up, and the middle schools in the K6 went down. So a lot of those students that were in that e-school, as we took away that provider and they went to other districts, that's the difference. And I'm not sure why my purple line disappeared, but it's pretty flat, maybe it's just because it's so flat, it can't be seen. So, let's go to the next slide. So this is our budget for this year, this current year FY25 and our proposed budget for FY26. And this is by fund, so you can see our revenue up at the top by all of the different funds, and our expenditures by all of the different funds. And this combines any kind of other financing source. So you can see on our municipal building authority for next year, that's netting the expenses against our bond that we're planning on issuing in the beginning of this next fiscal year to build the next part of Tempe and the planning stage for Dixon. So that's the reason that that is negative. Then you also have a couple of things, our self-insurance fund, so we're self-insured, and our claims this year, they've determined that we will be, we need an increase of about 30%, which is about $4 million. So when you're looking at a $2.5 million increase in the WPU and a $4 million increase in insurance, that's significant. So a lot of what we decided to do was, with the extra interest that we have received this year above our budget, we can do a transfer for half of that amount so that we only have to put the burden on employees of 15% instead of the full 30. And so that has helped quite a bit, so it's not quite kind of like increasing taxes twice every year, you know, that is an impact on a family, as is the insurance impact on families. So the expense and the income that you have there, we're not bringing in as much income, because we'll do a transfer this year from that interest that we've been bringing in. Okay, any questions on, and we'll go through each of the individual funds and we'll be pretty speedy. So go to the next one. So these are our functions. So you can see on our instructional services, this year, we are at 103 million, next year we're at 108. So what I want to highlight here is that state sources of revenue. So they have $98.9 million of state revenue this year and $106.2 million next year. So you're gonna say, well, that's more than $2.5 million. Well, just this week, we were decreased by the state and our federal, and our state revenue by $3 million. So I had to pull that out of the budget, so our original budget had about $102 million of state revenue. So right now, they're projecting us to bring in 106, which, if you drill into it, about $2.2 million are the teacher increases that were provided and the educator salary adjustment and the classified bonuses. That's $2.2 million and $2.5 million, that is a significant portion of what that piece is. And then you'll see federal revenue's fairly flat, it's gone down a little bit because we don't have that 21st century grant any longer, and that was additional federal revenue that we had. So for the most part, I think really one of the things that I want to highlight, and maybe we'll do that on the next, let's go to the next slide. And you can see on here, just our salaries is a significant portion of our budget. If you take out debt and our construction costs, it's about 85%, but if you include those big expenditures for the debt, it is a little bit more. And you'll see that 26 has a little bit of a higher debt service amount, that is because that QSCB bond from 2006 is being paid. So we have been putting money into a sinking fund for the last 20 years, and now we make one big balloon payment, and we have one year that we make that $6.5 million payment. So that's why that one is, it's not a $6.5 million increase in the budget, we've been keeping the money aside for the last several years, now we're just gonna pay it. So, all right, let's keep going. This is where you're gonna see a little bit of what I want to highlight. So you can see, especially, let's look at district admin, this is one of the things I love that Wendy has done. So back in 2022, FY22, our district admin cost was almost $2.5 million. That has gone down to $1.5 million as we've put more of the resources back out in schools as opposed to being in the district office. So that's something that I really appreciate. That is the board salaries, that's the superintendent, that's mine, that's a lot of the district admin, so network equipment, because that is for the district as a whole, some of that is there, and Steve and I are kind of going through and figuring out, okay, so what else do we need to move, so that we can actually give a reflective amount of what is actually, what it costs to have the district admin. But you can see over the last couple of years, it's been a lot lower than in the three previous to that. So this is just the general fund, just so if you didn't see the very top. So you can see there that 97 million in state and 105 million in federal, for this year. So this year for state is 97, next year is 105. Again, I just lowered it 3 million, and 5 million of it is the classified and bonuses, additional educational salary adjustment and the WPU increase. So, and then you can see our decrease in our federal revenue. So overall, our funds are moving exactly the way that you expect them to, and the functions are staying fairly similar. Okay, let's keep going, we'll be fast. So this just shows, when you're looking at the total cost of the budget, your first is instruction, that is the primary function of the district office, is the instruction of the students, and then you have all the supporting functions beyond that. The operation and maintenance, that's all of our custodial, our maintenance workers, so there's, that is required to keep our buildings up and running. And then you can see that district admin is the smallest portion of the district expenditures. Let's go. Foundation is just required to be there, because we are required to have it as reported on our state reports. It's one that on our financial reports is removed as a component unit, it's at the very front and government-wide. But you can see this year, the expenses are a little higher, because we will have that transfer from the foundation for the holding account for the after-school, to be able to keep supporting those, the couple of schools that we need to for the next year or two. So, okay, let's keep going. This is our student activity fund, you can see our revenue will be going down primarily because we aren't doing a general required fee, but some of the other fees may, like fundraising, that may go up because it's not a fee any longer, and some of those things that could help support the schools, so it's not down quite as much, but we believe that that will be because there's a lot of the programs that'll bring in a little bit more, because they don't have to have fundraising on the fee schedule. And then those expenses, this year is a little bit high, I'll give you- I, I'll give you a, a little bit of a, of a clue. Um, if I go over budget in a fund, um, I, we get written up by the state and sent to the state auditor. So we generally build in a cushion to each of our budgets just so we don't go over budget. Cause I have been surprised by this fund a few times because they'll have, you know, at the end of the year, everybody wants to spend all the money that they have left. And so it, it, it doesn't follow a general trend of all of the other schools. But that is the case with a lot of our funds. We build in a cushion so that if there is some unforeseen circumstances, that we can handle those without, without going, without being out of compliance. Okay, let's go to the next one. Um, let's skip this one. This is our, this is just the, the redevelopment and the charter school that we are required to assess that we don't ever receive. So it's kind of one of those funds that it's pointless, but we have to have it on there. Um, municipal building authority, again, this is our, our tax, our, our buildings that we're doing, our shoreline, WASatch, and then our Temp View. So the FY26 is Temp View. We have a little bit extra in the budget this year, uh, because we are being penalized by the IRS because we didn't finish the project within the three years that is allowed. So, because you have three years from the time you issue the bonds till the time that you're done. And if your interest rates are too high, then they will penalize you and send you a bill. I haven't gotten the bill yet, but we've built in a, a fairly healthy cushion to make sure that we can pay for that. Okay, keep going. Oh, debt service. So here's where you can see our, our, those transfers. So last, that last year, we did a million dollars for technology. This year, we'll do 2.5. Next year, I have budgeted a million, just so we can make sure we, again, if you keep too much money in this fund, you can be penalized by the IRS. And that's, I don't want to pay anything back to the IRS. I, I don't like the IRS. So I typically will make sure that there isn't, there isn't a large balance there. So let's keep going. Capital projects, again, these are our funds that, these are our projects that we're doing. On the next page, let's go to the next page and you can see, here's all the pro, the, the projects that are in the budget for this year that have been approved by the capital facilities committee. As you approve the budget, um, in June, you will also be approving this list uh, for the specific projects. And as things that are in some of the general projects are over 50,000, we will still bring that back to you. But you can see like Canyon Crest Playground, you have the Amelia Roof, um, the bathroom remodels at both Westridge and Canyon Crest. Those are actually starting right now, so we can possibly get done before the beginning of school. It would be kind of nice to have bathrooms for all the kids. I don't know, it's one of those strange things. And then the Spring Creek, um, upgrades for the site. So let's go to the next one. Child nutrition, you'll see this year, the, the expenses are a little higher. Number one, there's a, there's a cushion. Number two, we had a planned spend down. We had too much fund balance when they came and did their annual review. So we had to spend things down. So we bought the truck, uh, we bought lunch tables for two schools and some of the, the additional ones for WASatch. So, next page. Self-insurance, here's where the self-insurance fund, you'll see the $2 million transfer we're doing this year for the half of the amount that is the increase. And then you'll see that the, those expenses are about 17.2, 17.3. Those may have to be adjusted based on our usage. Where, education tends to be very high users of insurance. And so we can't guess when someone's going to get cancer or someone's going to have an accident. And, and so we, we'll look at that as we go. And if those expenses come in lower, then the next year, we don't have to do quite as much of an increase, if any at all. That's one of the beauties of being self-insured is the idea that we have that flexibility as people become consumers with their insurance or with their insurance and their healthcare or as people become healthier with CAT's awesome wellness program. So I think that might be it.
Yes.
I'm only 15, no, I'm only 10 minutes over. Any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
When you mentioned the state income and that just changing like this week, can you explain to me why that fluctuates?
Cause they take what we've received for the year in our property taxes. We have to report to them. And then they subtract what they, what, so they take the WPU, the basic rate, deducts what the state has to give us.
Yes.
And then at the end, they do a true-up and say, oh, you brought in a little bit more in your personal property. So we're going to decrease your state revenue now.
Oh, perfect. Thanks. You did, you did explain that, I, I just needed a few times.
Nope, you're good. I, I know I tend to, to, to talk about it like I think everybody knows all about it.
That's helpful.
Um, and so, yes, please answer any, ask me any questions.
All right, we'll be talking about the budget again in future meetings before we approve it. In the meantime, if you come up with questions, you can send them to Devon.
Yep.
All right, thank you Devon. Okay, now it's time for policies with Wendy.
Who's excited for policies? I'm pretty excited. Okay, so, um, it's only taken us two years for me and Shawna and Bonnie to figure out how to do policies so we make sure everything's getting updated on the website. And I think we have our system down now. And so we won't have any more glitches where we're trying to find the policy on the website anyway. I apologize for all that.
It's a lot to figure out, you guys.
It's just, okay.
You're doing great.
So, um, we're going to try to, we're going to get through this presentation. And then if we don't get through the second readings, then we can do that in business meeting as you're going to adopt it. And I don't know which button I'm supposed to push. Oh, look at that. Okay, here we go. I gotta just make sure this is right. I know, right? Okay, so we're going to start with policy 1455 called Local School Boundaries and Program Assignments. Um, the purpose of this policy was to make sure that we were doing, um, basically a boundary and feasibility study um, every, once every five years. So, cause it's been such a long time since we've done one. We recognize that, um, once those boundary studies are done, it may take up to two years to implement. So we're really looking at a process of boundaries getting changed possibly once every seven years. Um, and we wanted to make sure that people understand that any boundary adjustments and/or school closures must follow state law and policy 1450. So policy 1450 has the actual, like, what has to happen in terms of hearings and all of those pieces. And then this is just about really making sure that we're evaluating, um, our system for efficiency. Line 62 through 89, a list, the criteria for recommending individual school boundaries. You can see those there. I don't feel like I need to go through those. Um, and then lines 95 to 102 talk about other factors to consider such as feeder patterns or, um, trying to create neighborhood schools. Um, and line 104, this is still tied to our open enrollment policy because the state law requires that, um, if our buildings are not at 90% capacity, they can be open for open enrollment. And so that ensures that that's still in place. Um, and then line 108, again, uh, we're doing this every five years, two years for implementation. Um, there was a question that was asked about changing the language to any, this is on line 110, um, to any approved boundary change on this particular line. So, see, now this time I have my policy, but I forgot my glasses in my office. So it's super great. But it says on line 110, it's talking about a study must be initiated within five years of the last implementation. And the implementation of new boundaries must be completed within two years of, of the conclusion of the boundary study. Um, so is, is this about any approved boundary change? We argue that it could be problematic to state that because sometimes we have to add in like a housing development or something. And so we don't want to say, well, now that starts over the process of the boundary and feasibility study. So now it's seven years out from that. That's just one of those temporary things. I hope that kind of makes sense. So we, we might, yeah, we might need to clarify the language there, um, so we can take that to policy committee. Oh. Oh my gosh, that's ama, oh yes, that's a whole new world right there. So thank you. Thanks Emily, now she can't see anything. Um, line 116 talks about an emergency adjustment. I had a question about what that entails. That's like, uh, I was a, um, in a district where a school had asbestos discovered in a school and they had to shut down the school. Um, and so they had to redistribute the students to other locations as a result of that. So that would be an emergency adjustment. Um, it's usually when there's a safety consideration. And then if you're taking that emergency adjustment and making it permanent, you would still have to follow all of those state district laws and policies about boundary adjustments. Um, line 149 is really important, especially to parents who have maybe a fifth grader going into sixth grade. And that's when the boundary changes are happening or an eighth grader or a senior in high school or something like that. Um, we phase it in so it doesn't disrupt their education. So it's not like I've gone to this school for five years and now I'm going to go to a different school for the final year. We want to be, um, sensitive to that. And I don't know why it's not going. There we go. Oh, I think I went too far. Did I go too far? I just have the recommendations. Okay, see, perfect. It just takes a village up here to run this. So, um, our recommendation is just to put this on the website, um, get, um, feedback on it and whatever questions that you have, I will take down.
I, I had a, a weird idea when I was reading this, I thought.
Can you get closer to the mic, please?
Yeah, tell me about your weird idea, Terry, I'm writing it down.
Um, should we cancel the small schools policy then? If we're making this policy? Because it kind of seems unnecessary.
Yep. So we'll have to follow our policy for the suspension of a policy. So I'll take that to policy committee to talk about the suspension of the policy. Did everybody catch that?
Yes.
Okay, go.
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a good suggestion, Terry.
But I wasn't really sure, so I thought, well, I'm going to ask.
No, I'm glad you brought it up. We can bring it to policy committee, no problem. Okay, any other questions? I know, this is really exciting. Okay, 1700, this is the one you gotta pay attention to, compensation and benefits for board members. This is an updated version of a current policy. Um, it would change, this is from Devon and myself, our recommendation to change board member compensation to $750 a month, which would provide also an additional amount of, um, $150 for board leadership. So that would be a total of 900 a month. Just for the public to know that, um, you're currently paid 480 a month, um, which is not comparable to what other boards are making. And we would be happy to provide that information to you if you would like to see it. Um, Devon and I talked about, this was Devon's idea and I thought this was a great idea, that the compensation for the board is set to mirror that of an hourly employee on a lane one, step one rate, um, provided that the average board member's putting in approximately 50 hours of time over the course of the month, which is a gross underestimate in terms of the amount of time that you guys put in. Um, and then the ideas in this policy, if we increase that hourly rate, um, then what would happen is that your rate would increase at the same amount for that 50 hours a month estimate. Um, and it would go into effect, um, for the same pay period. And then we would do a full comprehensive review of board compensation every five years. Um, lines 32 to 34, clarify that you are given a laptop, desktop or tablet and that, um, we do pay for your internet connectivity. I think in the original, it said we may pay for that, we're, it's a will pay for that. Um, we also clarified in line 42 that we cover medical and dental insurance. 45 through 46, I'm really sorry you guys don't get sick leave. So, um, I know you sometimes are sick and you still show up, but, um, but, and then we do pay for a UHSAA state athletic pass. And then, um, line 49, that reimbursements for mileage outside of Utah County for conference attendance, things like that, um, can be applied for. So our recommendation is to put it on the website and then send those, um, uh, that feedback back to policy committee. I've spoken with Kristy Givlin, who's our PEA, um, president. Um, she's fully in favor of, um, of this as well. Look at that, she gave me a peace sign back there. Um, so, any questions? I'm going fast.
Uh, I do.
Um, Terry, again?
Line 27.
Yes.
Twenty, yes, 27. Should we do it four years to match with the city council? That's what I was thinking.
Whatever you want. But the number was completely arbitrary. I would really like to say that I, there was a lot of thought in that number.
And also maybe have, instead of just you and Devon doing it every year, also have, I mean, every four years, have, what's the CCC called now?
Community Connections Committee?
Have them review it as well? So it, it's not all the blame's put on the two of you.
I'm really okay with blame, but. Okay, you want me to send those recommendations to policy committee?
Please.
Okay.
And I'm not sure the, the number of years that we reevaluate matters as much if we are already tying a metric to be increasing year to year. So yeah, we'll let the policy committee figure out what they think is best on that.
Okay. Are there questions? All right, we're hauling, next one, here we go. 3330, this is inclusive learning environments, which is already currently a policy. Um, this is to deal with House Bill 77, um, the display of flags in classrooms. Um, and there are some individuals that have gone in in terms of other districts that have completely rewritten this. And I really thought that a lot of care, Lisa brought this up in policy committee, had gone into this policy. And so our recommendation, um, was just to add, um, one line about the display of flags. And I think it's on line 64, it's in blue. It says only display flags in accordance with Utah Code 63G dash one dash 7043. Um, my questions are, do we need to add a definition for display? And are there any other definitions or do we feel like the policy is okay? Um, we did not have the linked procedure on this policy. It has now been linked so that people know how they go about making a complaint. In state law, it tells people to go straight on to the, um, public education hotline referral. I don't love that because it's taking it to the highest level. I would really like us to try to resolve those issues between teachers and parents or, um, a teacher and a parent and a principal. Um, and so that's why we like this procedure. If somebody then doesn't feel like that we're following that procedure or they take it up the chain of command and it doesn't go that route, then I feel like it goes through that, um, policy hotline. I feel like if we're resolving this, this doesn't need to result in something made out to be big. I don't think our educators are coming from a position of, um, trying to create contention. I, I really don't. So I just wanted some, I just had those questions. Um, thoughts on that? Um, and then, uh, yeah, and then I put the procedure. Um, do we want to add into that procedure a link to the public school reporting hotline? We certainly can. It is on the front page of our webpage. Um, but we can also do that just for full transparency, so. Go ahead Gina. Gina?
I just, um, the question that you asked, I would prefer that we try to do it as a district first. Like I think if we can solve it on the, like locally, then let's do that. As long as they have the option, if, if they don't feel that it's been remedied, that they can then take it to the state. But I'd love for them to start with us.
Lisa?
Yeah, I was just going to, uh, agree with that and add, like, obviously a parent or student can always call the state. Just to make that clear, if some, if that's the way someone would like to address it and it feels safer to them. But also just to let people know, we have a commitment to the right kinds of learning environments here and also to nurturing and supporting teacher relationships with students and parents. So any opportunity there is for that to become a collaborative, um, sharing moment of connection to resolve and understand one another and create a classroom where everyone does feel like they belong as learners. I, I just love the opportunity for our great educators to handle that here. But anyone who would prefer the other method would always have access to it. I don't know that it needs to be put into the policy because it is clear on the website. So personally, I would rather we just, within procedure here, link how to locally address and communicate around these issues.
Committee?
Yeah, I just agree. Like if it's our, our specific district policy procedure, let's do what our procedure, that means working within, starting at that level.
Okay. Next. 4200, this is our electronic device restrictions. Um, there were two recommended, uh, there was one recommended change and one recommended clarification. So lines 85 to 88 state that schools can make the policy more restrictive, but not less restrictive. This was one of our high schools, it was Independence High School, that wanted to, um, actually follow the state code and get rid of cell phones from bell to bell. Um, and they didn't feel like that they could do that. And so, um, we've added that language. Um, by policy committee recommendations, if it leads to unexpected costs, like you're forcing the students, every student to put their phone in a pouch, then the school would be responsible for covering those costs. And then lines 122 to 123, um, that the restriction on cell phones during class time applies to all class sessions, even independent study, office aides, teacher aides and study hall classes, because I created a whole huge maelstrom, um, with some principals by interpreting that. because I created a whole huge maelstrom with some principles by interpreting that differently. And I think actually our principals appreciate, just keep it, keep it the same for all things. And I know that there were some suggestions on rephrasing that. So maybe it was a little bit clearer and we can certainly tease that out in Policy Committee. But questions about this? So that's why this is coming back. Not because I want to talk about cell phones more. Although I do, although I do love it.
We, we learn as we implement the policy and then we make those little adjustments. I think it's great.
Okay. You guys are an easy crowd today. Okay, 5045, this is Salary Supplements for Highly Needed Educators. This used to be something that the state determined. They would identify these high-needs areas and then teachers would be eligible for a supplemental amount on their salary. It is now up to the LEA to identify these areas every single year. And so as a result, we need to have a policy for that. So that's the purposes of lines 12 through 17 is just to explain that. We put in there lines 23 to 24 that those high-needs areas are determined by the board by April 1st, that those would be posted on the Human Resources website. And that I wanted to make it clear that we have already identified those areas for the 2025, 2026 school year to be sped, K-12, Math and Science, 7 through 12. And then the teacher submits documentation to the state. We help with that, but they initiate that process. Line 80, we want to make it clear because in the legislation, it talks about this term of base pay, which is not the same as base contract pay. So we did add a definition at the beginning. Number four, it's on line 37, a base pay, which is just, it's, the reason they want it added in there is because they want you to understand that we're still paying the benefits for retirement on that base pay. But it doesn't become part of the contract. It's not a guaranteed amount from year to year, only if the teacher continues to qualify as a high-needs area teacher. And so the question that we have is, is this language, and this is really a question in particular for Devin, do we feel like that this language is clear enough? Or do we need to take this back to Policy Committee and clarify further?
I think it's, I think it's clear.
Okay. All right, so our recommendation is we would still put it out on the website, get feedback, take it back to Policy Committee, bring it back in June. You guys are so easy. Okay, 5055, is teacher leader. This is a new thing that was introduced by the state that allows us to designate teacher leaders to expand their responsibilities within a school. Lines 33 to 70 talks about the roles of these teacher leaders. A few of you mentioned, do we need to stipulate somewhere in those roles that they are to support the role of instructional coaches? I think one of the concerns that was brought up was making sure that they don't start giving mentoring advice to a teacher that might contradict what a coach is doing. So perhaps clarifying that. We could certainly do that. And then we also eliminated the word supervising on line 46. I just felt like that was problematic. I don't think teachers should supervise other teachers. It does state that in state law, but I think that's also because in smaller school districts, sometimes those more veteran teachers are assisting with that. And then a question was brought up by one of you on line 73, can we guarantee the incentive? We did not put that in there, that the incentive is guaranteed. We do have this in place for our building leadership team members for this coming year because we have a grant for that. A lot of our principals will build this into their discretionary funding, but we have not made this a requirement. Is that something that we want to do or, anyway? I'm sure Devin has an opinion about it, but, but I, you know, otherwise, it's just a title, right?
Right.
I, I think that we don't need to put in policy what the incentive is necessarily. But if we're committed to this program, we need to be committed that we're going to find some kind of incentive, whether it's from the district, from the grant, from the school budgets. Because otherwise, we give them a long list of things we want them to do and not necessarily a personal benefit for it. And we have teachers with caring, giving hearts, but they should get something for it as well.
And I will tell you that most of the schools do give a stipend for the teacher leader. Jason and his team did an awesome job standardizing that. So a teacher leader is pretty much paid the same amount across all of the schools.
So if we even just say they will receive a stipend or, you know, something, or however we want to say that.
And I, and I think we, I think one of the things that comes up sometimes from the association is, is as we define this, to help schools so that one school isn't paying a sizably different amount than another school, but they're expected to do the same amount of work. So I think we need to have some language in there so that, so that teachers are feeling like that's fair across the board. Okay. Yes, one more, and this is just a procedure. So this one doesn't need to be voted on, but I wanted to make you aware of this. This is about access to students by law enforcement and DCFS. It follows state law in what, in how law enforcement is allowed to interact with a student, at what ages they can interact with a student, and how we have to have proper documentation or there has to be an immediate threat to safety. We do document all of those things. Every school has a procedure for how that happens. It also outlines our processes for law enforcement to interview a student. On line 91, there was a question about the word sought. This is really about the student they are wanting to interview. They're seeking this student to interview them. So they're entering the school, they're saying, is this student here? We'd like to interview them. So we can do some language adjustments. If we feel like that isn't clear, we can do that with Policy Committee or even I can work with Jason Garrison on that. Notice in lines 103 to 123, this was a discussion in Policy Committee, law enforcement is required to notify parents when they're interviewing. The only exception to that is if there's an immediate safety situation, like there's a gun or there's a threat and they need to get information from a student quickly. That might happen after the fact. Student under the age of 14 is generally not interviewed by law enforcement without parental consent unless those emergency situations have been established. And in general, our practice is that an administrator needs to be present when that is occurring so that it isn't a child in there with law enforcement by themselves. And then line 50, 152, do you want to add the word there between conditions and consent? So it would read the parent legal guardian conditions, their consent on being present. Or does it make sense the way it is? I just thought I would ask that question. Added, okay, done. Make that note, added. And then notice that on lines 179 to 202, that several responsibilities do lie with law enforcement. Lisa brought up a great situation in the sense of just really helping our administrators understand how we can help support our parents in this process. So they're not feeling like they're out of the loop on what's going on and that we're helping law enforcement to follow up. Because especially if you have a new school resource officer or something like that, administrators can be very valuable in helping bridge that and just, we, we can help with that, with that side of it. And then we did add a dash after observe for greater clarity on line 229. And then we can just add it to Policy 7300, no vote. What comments do you have? Did I get through? Is there one more? Am I all done? Oh, my gosh. Questions? All right.
Hey. Thank you not only to Wendy, but to everybody on the Policy Committee and who helps find the scenes, get all those ready. It's so much work. You guys are just awesome and there's more coming.
More coming.
Their new legislative session. So, all right, for the sake of time, we will save items 11 through 13 for our business meeting. And after we adjourn this, there is a reception for us out in the hall with our teacher award winners, who we will then recognize here at the business meeting. And we will begin that business meeting at 7:00 PM. And recommend check your battery level on your computer. You might want to plug in in the meantime. So, do we have a motion to adjourn our study session?
I move we adjourn our study session.
Okay, motion made by Board Member Van Wagnen, we are adjourned.